Good evening. Will this meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 279, please come to order? It is the sixteenth of August, 2016, and the time is 6:05 PM. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left to your right, is Director Jessica Craig, Director Linda Edom, Director Bob Gerhart, Director Dean Henke, Director Jim Burgett, Director Jackie Gertz, and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Kate McGuire. Would everybody please stand for the pledge?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, in front of you is the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I would move to accept the agenda as printed.
Second?
Second, by Director Gertz. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to accept the agenda as printed. Our next agenda item is audience opportunity to address the school board, and I do not have any of the salmon-colored cards, and I don't see anybody making a move for them. So we will move to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. McGuire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A regular part of the superintendent's report is to share points of pride. The points of pride celebrate students, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. And I've asked cabinet members to share those points of pride tonight.
Under the category of achieving dreams, ten class of 2016 Park Center students earned an international baccalaureate diploma from the International Baccalaureate Organization. The IB Diploma Program for High School Juniors and Seniors is an academically challenging and balanced program of education that prepares students for success at university and in life beyond. The Elm Creek Elementary PTO was given special recognition for general excellence in the National PTO Today Parent Group of the Year Search. One of the key factors for recognition was a demonstration of strong parent involvement.
Maple Grove Magazine interviewed three of our students as they are about to embark on their senior year. Maple Grove's Bubba Charlie Horton and Osseo Senior High's Cory Moody and Tina Bowe were featured for their academics, leadership, activities, and goals for the future. School District students Samantha Swinson and Julia Mitchell, not pictured, were among the state schools' bus safety poster contest winners who helped raise awareness to stop on red. The Minnesota Pupil Transportation Association and the Minnesota State Patrol recognized winners at a recent Minnesota Twins game. Samantha attended Basswood Elementary when she created the poster and will enter Maple Grove Middle this fall. Julia attended Fernbrook and is heading to Osseo Middle.
In the category of contributing to community, as part of their summer-long service learning project, Kid Stop students throughout the district partnered with University of Minnesota Gopher athletes to raise funds for the Pinky Swear Foundation, which helps families with children battling cancer. The hosted charity Car Washes Lemonade Stands collected more and Lemonade Stands collected more than $1,800 for the foundation. Park Center cheerleaders brightened children's spirits when they visited the hospital's Star Studio to co-host Kids Clubhouse, which is broadcast to hospital rooms in Children's Hospitals of Minneapolis and St. Paul.
Osseo and Park Center Senior High students participated in Beneath the Skins, a multicultural show hosted by Junior Brooklyn Interact Club, which is overseen by the City of Brooklyn Park. The goal of the event was to educate, create understanding between different cultures, and to connect through similarities. Students celebrated their cultures through performing, modeling, and sharing food. One hundred percent of the proceeds from the event will be used to acquire clean medical supplies and school supplies for Leprosy Village in Cameroon, West Africa. Community Education Spot students in Osseo Middle School's Old Zone students partnered for a summer community service day. Service activities included putting together packages for Brooklyn Park's avenues for homeless youth, writing thank-you cards for local police officers, firefighters, and city council members, making fleece tie blankets for Maple Grove Hospital pediatric patients, and making coasters for staff members at Osseo Middle School, Maple Grove Middle School, and the Educational Service Center.
In the category of lifelong learning, 200 students participated in Freedom School this summer at Birch Grove Elementary and Park Brook Elementary. Freedom Schools builds strong, literate, and empowered children through academic enrichment, cultural experiences, and positive attitudes through affirmation. Freedom School programming has curbed summer learning loss and is helping to close the achievement gap by accelerating student achievement. This summer, Osseo area schools hosted ten local student interns as part of Brooklink, an initiative of the Twin Cities-based Brooklyn Bridge Alliance for Youth. With assignments in human resources, community education, information technology, custodial services, and the Freedom Schools program, the teens had an opportunity to explore potential careers, hone their skills, and contribute to department and district-wide projects.
Osseo Senior High Opportunities in Emergency Care students use the healthcare skills they've learned while providing first aid support at the Soccer USA Cup in Blaine this summer. The Lopet Foundation joined forces with Park Brook Elementary to send some of our students to Lopet Adventure Camp. As featured on WCCO, the experience encourages youth to be active while introducing them to outdoor recreation activities. Research suggests that regular physical activity helps students focus, learn, and perform better in class. Park Brook integrates a focus on fitness throughout the school day to help students find their path to be healthy, well-prepared, and ready to learn.
In the category of mission-driven employees, Osseo Senior High Social Studies teacher, Bill Baumann, was invited to Washington, DC to learn creative strategies to integrate C-SPAN programming into classroom activities, connecting students with public affairs content, and cultivating a better understanding of how federal government works. Osseo Area Schools' food and nutrition staff was featured in Maple Grove Magazine for their focus on creating healthy and tasty vegetable recipes that our students enjoy. For the past three years, staff have trained with Chef Marshall and collaborated in creating attractive vegetable recipes.
Junior Achievement of the Upper Midwest named Maple Grove Senior High Teacher Jeff Rush, High School Educator of the Year. This award is presented to an educator who has performed outstanding service in making junior achievements high school programs available for their students. Basswood Elementary Principal Patrick Smith was featured on Channel 12 News sharing back-to-school tips for students and families. He touched on establishing routines, homework study habits, and more.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, in the rest of my report, I'd like to introduce a new leader in our school district. So Sarah, I'd like you to stand up, please. Board Member Sarah Schmidt will be the new Assistant Principal at Palmer Lake Elementary School. Sarah has worked in Osseo Area Schools since 2001. She has served as a skills teacher at Elm Creek, a Title I and fifth-grade teacher at Fair Oaks, a sixth-grade teacher at Oakview, and as an instructional coach. Most recently, though, she served as a differentiation staff development and assessment specialist. Sarah looks forward to meeting the staff, students, and families at Palmer Lake and being a part of the Palmer Lake community. So welcome, Sarah. Thank you. In keeping with the theme of new leaders, I had a delightful visit yesterday with a young leader from our community named Nelsie Yang. Nelsie, a Park Center graduate from the class of 2013, was an at-large delegate to last month's Democratic National Convention in Philadelphia. Ms. Yang is a senior this year at Minnesota State University at Mankato, and she plans to attend law school when she's done. She stopped by to share her experience at the convention, which she attended to help make sure that there was Mung representation at the decision-making table. During her visit with us yesterday, Nelsie also commented on the outstanding District 279 teachers that she had in elementary, middle school, and high school, and she noted the significant positive influence they had on her life. Lastly, I want to provide an update on our work to prepare for the increase in number of four-year-olds that will serve next year in our expanded pre-K programs. Recently, Osseo Area Schools was given the largest award in the state of Minnesota to expand access to free pre-K programming at targeted schools. Because expanding access to pre-K has been a strategic priority for our school board in the last five years, we've made steady progress, slow but steady, in serving more four-year-olds. One of the positive implications of our grade span change was that we created more room in some of our elementary schools for pre-K programming. Increasing the number of four-year-old students in our schools helps students gain early learning experiences that ensure that they're ready for kindergarten and helps them to gain the literacy skills that increase the chances that they'll be reading at grade level in Grade III as required by our World-- both of them are legislatively mandated World's Best Workforce Goals. We have an enthusiastic group of team members led by Kim Heil and Brian Severson Hall. Although they might look tired, they are enthusiastic. They are working at a fast pace to communicate the new opportunity to families, because, of course, we just-- everyone learned about this opportunity late in the spring and summer. So they're trying to coordinate communication about the new opportunity to families, prepare classrooms, hire teachers, education support professionals, and coordinate transportation. We learned about eligibility for the award late last spring and had only a matter of weeks to submit the required application. Districts who received a financial award were notified only a few weeks ago and now must prepare new programs to begin already in September. It is a very, very exciting opportunity for our students and families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is school board reports. Oh, I'm sorry. School board reports. Do we have any school board reports?
Sure.
Sometimes I start to read a little bit ahead on the agenda, and I wanted to make sure I didn't. Director Gertz?
I just wanted to share a couple of seminars that I attended just last week. On August 7th, Sunday, August 7th, Monday, August 8th, I attended the Minnesota School Board Association's Summer Seminar at the Marriott here in Brooklyn Park. The MSBA provides education for school board members. The title this year was Framing the Equity Conversation. Most of the training was around racial equity. They gave us updates on the 2016 legislative session, provided us with a summary booklet, stuff like that, and then they provided training. On the ninth, they provided training for new school board members. I find the summer sessions are really valuable. It's a really good time to also network with other school board members that are close in our community, got an opportunity to speak to, you know, ones from Brooklyn Center, Anoka Hennepin, Robbinsdale. And I would just encourage everybody, all my fellow school board members, to, you know, watch in your emails to attend the summer seminar in next year. And then I also wanted to just share a seminar that I went to that really wasn't like school board-related but ended up being school board-related. I went to the-- I attended the Pacer Symposium, and this is about children, children and young adults with mental health and learning disabilities. So I went as a parent originally, and many of the speakers really were around education, racial equity, all the things that we were learning about here, and it was really hard to not have my school board member hat on while I was in these seminars. So one of them, one of the keynote speakers, she spoke on looking at learning disabilities and mental health through the lens of culture, where she discussed the over-identification of students of color in special education and how culture plays in this identifying of students. There were workshops and speakers on changing behaviors, helping children with mental health needs. There were a lot of educators in the room. And I would encourage any staff that work with special education to look into attending the Pacer Symposium. And I actually saw ESP from Woodland there, who was there on her own time. That wasn't school district learning time, but it was time that she was there and she was learning on how to do her job better, working with children with special needs and working with young children. So I just wanted to mention that because I just think that speaks to our staff and how dedicated they are and go above and beyond. You know, this was something that she was doing on her own, and I just wanted to just kind of let you all know that I saw someone there and how neat that is that our staff does that. So just, that's it.
Thank you.
For this week.
Do we have other school board reports? Hearing none. We will move to our next agenda item, a presentation, the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance. We have Brian Severson Hall and Rebecca Gilgan. Welcome. And I'm thinking one more individual, but we'll find out who you are when you get up there.
So, good evening, everyone. My name's Brian Severson Hall, Executive Director, Community Engagement. It's my pleasure to introduce our presenters this evening. And as you know, the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance is a valued partner of District 279. And tonight, Rebecca Gilgan, Executive Director of the Alliance, as well as Luis, a staff member from the Alliance, are here to give us an update on their work. And part of that presentation will include their work on youth and community engagement, pathways to college and career readiness, and closing opportunities and achievement gaps in the Brooklyn. So, welcome Rebecca and Luis.
Good evening. Chair Henke, thank you for having us tonight. Dr. McGuire and the rest of board members, I wanted to give a shout-out to Board Member Gertz for serving on the Alliance Board of Directors. Thank you for all of your work with us. I want to formally introduce Luis Salado Herrera. He's our Youth Employment Coordinator at the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance through-- he runs Brooklink and is amazing, so you're lucky to hear from him tonight as well. He's-- I say that specifically because he's a graduate from the Osseo School District, which makes him even more. Right? I'm just saying. Tonight, we're going to give a couple of updates on our work, some work that happened over this summer. And I want to begin with a quick overview of the Alliance. There are nine partners. We are an intergovernmental organization. We are not a nonprofit, so we coordinate between Hennepin County, the cities of Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park, four school districts that serve the two cities, Osseo, Brooklyn Center, Anoka Hennepin, Robbinsdale, and as well as with our two community college partners, Hennepin Technical College and North Hennepin Community College. So, easy. It's easy what we're trying to do. Those folks have come together, and we have three goals. One is to increase high school graduation, increase pathways to college and career, and to decrease young people's experience of violence. As you know, for young people to graduate, head to college, find their career and their passion, they need to do more than just participate and show up. They need to be engaged. We know that for them to be engaged, we need to create safe and supportive environments that are relevant to what young people are experiencing. This summer, at the Alliance, we had five Brooklink interns. And when there were traumatic events happening all over our country and here in Minnesota, we recognized immediately that we needed to create a safe space for young people to do our work, but more importantly, to do their work of understanding the world around them. We paused our work and we responded to not only our organizational need, but the need of other youth-serving organizations in our community to create a one-page facilitation plan on how you can stop what you're doing as a caring adult and help young people debrief the trauma that they are experiencing. We could not accomplish our work when the youth of color that were coming into our organization had all of this on their hearts and minds, and we needed to authentically create a space that was relevant for them. In doing so, we shared this with our Alliance partners, and since then, it's been really, really great to see the various school districts' responses in having us come in and speak with principals and associate superintendents that have requested that us, for us, to come in and share this tool so that staff have multiple tools for engaging and creating safe spaces for youth as they begin the school I wanted to just personally thank Dr. McGuire for allowing the Alliance staff to participate in the courageous conversation work that the district has taken on. We did this last year. This was a huge part of informing how we created this guide. We used that framework and the technology of participation to create this tool. And I think what we've heard initially from people who are caring adults, working with young people, is that it's in a very effective way of helping young people really feel engaged and safe. Our second update tonight is a little bit of a sneak peek around our data that we'll be releasing in full tomorrow at our board member, or at our board meeting tomorrow. We have quarterly board meetings. On our bi-annual, every two years-- who's the math teacher in the room?
I'm seven.
We do it every two years, and it's awesome, a survey of young people in our community. So we do this really to create, to collect primary voice from young people and bring this into our work, to deepen our understanding of youth. We, these are the five youth researchers that we hired. They're called our Youth Data Squad, because when you put out a job posting for youth researchers, kids don't apply for that. I don't know why. But Ivan Louis, our Data and Quality Coordinator, partnered with these young people to design the survey, implement the survey. We know we needed a statistically significant survey so that we could have confidence in this data, which, when we did the research, was about 370 so surveys of youth in Brooklyn Center and Brooklyn Park. We ended up collecting over 840 surveys from youth. These guys just absolutely did an amazing job. So what were we asking? Our primary questions were around how do we get young people to participate, engage, and engage in summer learning? The method, youth to youth, it's much easier for a young person to ask another young person about this than some old person like me who doesn't look like them to come up to them and try to gather information about, "Are you doing something this summer?" It's a little creepy. So, we hire young people to engage other young people in this process, and it works great every year. Our focus is on youth participation, understanding engagement, barriers and motivations to participation, challenges and solutions to life success. So a little snapshot. When we asked young people, "Are you doing anything this summer? Are you in a program? Are you involved in recreation activities?" Sixty percent of kids that we surveyed said no. So now, it's important to know, we didn't go to programs and survey kids. We went out to kids on the street, at bus stops, in the apartment complexes and their communities, especially in the high-density areas in our community, and we found that sixty percent of kids responded and said, "No, I'm not doing anything." We asked another question later on the survey. We asked young people, "Do you want to be engaged around the issues and decisions about your life?" Seventy-six percent of them said yes. I think we, like, we've been really sitting, and this is fresh for us, that is a huge gap in what is happening for young people and the fact that they want to be engaged. We see this as an opportunity for us to dig deeper, to understand what this gap is really about, and really immediately take on the challenge of increasing engagement practices within our programs and activities. And we know that if we create programs and activities that really engage young people, we think we can do a much better job stemming the learning loss that happens over the summer. Another set of the data was around challenges to life success. Sixty percent of young people said that responsibilities like jobs and homeworks and taking care of their family members affected their lives. We need to listen and understand more and better and more deeply about how these impact, how these responsibilities impact their ability to develop, impact their ability to take advantage of all of these great opportunities that our schools have. Fifty-two percent of youth surveyed said they had problems with school because they can't focus. This, I've never heard, like, this was such a great thing about youth-led research was that this emerged. Fifty-two percent said they couldn't focus. When we asked what would help them focus, youth indicated two top strategies. The first one was that they really felt that teaching approaches needed to be shifted. The way that teaching happened, the way that learning happened, they wanted to be more active and engaged. The second thing that surprised us was equal to that, was that young people said they needed to do a better job paying attention and being engaged themselves. So you really see this let's-meet-in-the-middle sense of things amongst young people in our community to improve learning. Lastly, and maybe most concerning, at least concerning for me, was that forty-six percent of the youth surveyed said they lost motivation because they had failed. This data raises questions about how are we preparing young people to deal with failure that they experience? Are we teaching persistence? Are we teaching them to persevere? Or are we teaching them, or creating a pass-fail mentality with our young people in how they consider their lives, their approaches to their lives? Our research suggests that we can motivate young people through encouragement. This was a question we asked them. I said, "Well, what would motivate you?" Their number-one answer was, "Encourage me." That's got to hit home for all of us in this room. Are we not reaching these more disconnected youth, and are they not getting the encouragement that they need? They also said incentives, and we asked a little bit more. I said, "Oh, we can't pay kids to go to school." And they said, "It's not about that. It's about rewards and recognition, being seen for the positive things that they're doing." So really, some key insights and some simple changes we can make to really motivate and engage youth. Our next steps is that we'll finish the final report. We'll have that out next week. We plan to share and reflect and really dive deep with our partners in thinking about how this work can inform their classroom strategies, but also the out-of-school-time strategies and programs. And of course, we use these results every year at the Alliance to shape our organizational strategic plan, our policy work, and we'll also use it to inform the work of the Brooklyn's Youth Council for the upcoming year. Since the beginning of 2015, the Alliance has been home to Brooklink. We have incubated this program since its beginning. And so we've played the role of really coordinating partnerships to reach our shared goal around getting young people prepared for college and career through immersion in work experience, not just a training, not just a job, but immersing young people in internship experience and reflecting on that experience. So now, I'd like to turn the time over to Luis to give our early metrics on our successes at Brooklink this summer. Luis?
All right. Thank you, Becca, and thank you, Board, Superintendent McGuire, and all the folks out here. I really appreciate the time for you to listen to what we have to say. And I will say, these are preliminary data points that we have collected. We haven't released our final report yet. We're working on having that, too, by September. All right. So as mentioned before, before I get started with the actual presentation, I am kind of a product of Osseo School District, so thank you all for kind of helping me get along in my life. I did graduate from Zane Wood as a sixth grader. Kelly Wilson was my sixth-grade teacher, actually, so that was awesome. Also graduated from Northview Junior High, and then a graduate from Park Center Senior High, where Kelly Parbert was my principal. So, a lot of love in the room today.
Yeah.
So, for those of you who may not know what Brooklink is, in a nutshell, Brooklink is a summer youth employment program that really helps coordinate opportunities for young people to gain access, especially young people that don't have the similar opportunities that we've all been maybe, you know, blessed with. So what those opportunities look like is having young people get the skills training that they need. So they go through a training where they learn the essential skills to be able to land a job, and not just land that job, but navigate the work environment, understanding what professionalism looks like, what's the importance of networking, communication skills, our 21st-century work skills. Young people get access to summer internship opportunities where it is hands-on. They're getting the work done, and we actually have some folks that maybe got to come across some of our interns here at Osseo Area Schools, so you maybe got to see them in action. And then also, we have college and career access opportunities for young people. We actually go onsite to locations like Target Corp, Cummins Power Generations, the U of M, North Hennepin, and young people get to understand, like, what are these institutions and organizations, and how can they maybe get connected to a career here, or how can they get connected to the educational opportunities where young people may not have those opportunities? Because I will say, we had several seniors in our program this year who had never gone on a college visit. So for me, that was alarming, that this visit with us was their first time going. So in a nutshell, that's what we do, and our mission is to help prepare every young person in Brooklink that faces a barrier to employment with the skills, the experience, and the social network they need to develop that pathway to college and career. So that's why we do the work that we do and kind of structure it the way that it has been structured. So what makes Brooklink interesting is that it is a public-private partnership. We have public and private funding for the program, and really what helps this be a sustainable program is that employers like Osseo Area Schools are putting the money forward and bringing students on board. Because if we totally depend on having organizations outside of what we can provide, giving us that funding to provide those internships, and if they disappear one day, so do the internships in our program. So if we know there's a sustainable effort that is truly brought together by the supports of our local employers. We are a coordinated program by our cities, our school partners, and also our businesses. So that's what makes us a really unique program. And we also are a response to several community and regional needs and challenges that we have faced. So as you can see up on the screen, there are some which are workforce shortage, which some of us are probably experiencing now, where you're not be able to find the right talent, or it's just that there's so many job openings that people are kind of going elsewhere at the moment. We have a lack of racial diversity in public set to workforce, so it's just something that I am happy that we're working towards very, very strongly. And students are not prepared for college and career. That's a reality. And I know I was kind of one of those students that had to be pushed along strongly to get to that point, and I want to be able to recreate those same supports of young people in our program that I was, really had that opportunity to have. And also, a lack of regional coordination to bring players together to build the world's best best workforce. So working with programs like RightTrack in St. Paul, Step Up Minneapolis, The Brand Lab, and Genesis Works, so understanding what are the best practices and how do we effectively work together to making sure that we're not really fighting for internships, that we're not fighting for youth, but we're really creating a support system for them where they have the best opportunities at their disposal. So I'm going to give you some quick data points about our community impact, starting off with our employers. So as you can see here, I don't want to toot our own horn, but we really surpassed our goals this year. Our goal's to have 50 internships coordinated for young people this summer. We surpassed that and had 68 internships, and bringing in nine new employers this year, which was phenomenal for us. And I'm going to say it again, thank you to Osseo Area Schools, Board, Superintendent, for coordinating the 10 interns that were here this summer, working across five different departments. I want to make sure that I get them all. I know they mentioned them earlier, but we did have students who were in community education, Freedom Schools, Human Resources, Information Technology, and also custodial services. So they got a taste of a lot of different things. Even within their departments, they got the opportunity to go out and adventure and explore other opportunities within the school district, so that was phenomenal for them. So, of those 10 students, there's two students that shared something really remarkable with me. One of those students being Pierre Lohan and Samira Amin, that spoke about their experience at Freedom Schools, and how they had sort of an inkling, right? We all have these kind of ideas that, "Maybe I want to be a doctor, maybe I want to be a lawyer," and these kids said, "Maybe I want to be an educator." But they weren't sure, until they had this internship that really solidified it for them. Being at Freedom Schools, working with students that were working at having strong literature and reading skills, and working with them directly every single day in the summer was what helped them push towards having that career pathway, towards education. I really wish Pierre was here to join us today. Unfortunately, he did have a job interview. He texted me about 10 minutes ago, saying that he got the job. So, that's a positive thing. He got the job. But those are the sorts of things that we really look for. Aside from, you know, the quantitative data, the qualitative is really important. What's the story behind it, right? And those are the stories behind these internships, that we aren't just creating opportunities and people go get money and get paid, but we're really truly helping them define what their future looks like. And along with that, if you look at the productivity, students contribute about over 10,000 hours of their time this summer, working in over 40 different departments across our community. So that was phenomenal to see. So for students, we had a really big turnout for students. We had 361 eligible students applying to the program this year, and 136 of those students completed our work readiness training. So for those of you who don't know what that is, students completed about 12 hours of total training, you know, learn how to find a job, learn how to apply, interview, things of that sort. And they spent two Saturdays coming to either Hennepin Technical College or North Hennepin to get this training. It really showed their commitment to wanting to really better themselves, and showing their commitment to bettering themselves every single day. So we had 136 students complete that training, and we had roughly about 86 students apply for a paid summer internship. So of those 136 that are eligible to apply, we had 86 actually apply for a Brooklink internship this summer, and we successfully matched 65 of those students. So, the students that make up those that came to our training and finished it off, 35% of those students were from Osseo Area Schools. And I will say, these numbers are not possible without the support of those individuals in the schools, our educators, our folks in the Career College Resource Centers, our advisors, our counselors. And what we're looking to do is, we really want to solidify those relationships so that we can have a higher level of engagement. Because going back to that survey that Becca shared earlier, one of the data points that I pulled out from there that really is just a key thing for our program to be successful, is young people say they are 40% more likely to participate in a program if someone personally connects them to it. It's not me going into the school and assuming I can recruit all these students and tell them that their lives will be phenomenal if they apply for the program, but someone that truly believes in them, and that they trust being that individual who makes that handoff. So identifying who are those people in the schools that we can partner with, that's what we really want to work towards when we start recruiting again in January of 2017. So of those students that were matched to internship opportunities, they represented 21 different cultural backgrounds. 65 students made up 21 different cultural backgrounds. That's phenomenal. And we had 95% students of color. 55% of those students came from new immigrant families, and 72% were students that came from low-income families as well. So of those outcomes for our young people, we see that students, is an estimated amount of $97,500 is what they had in income this summer. That's huge. That's new income. Those are new jobs that were made for our community, and that are really going towards families that don't necessarily have that access to that money right away, right? And again, with that, this program, on the qualitative side, provided early exposure and access to our young people, not just to careers and jobs, but also to college, and understanding how does the math class that I take right now connect to a math class that I'll be taking when I go to the U of M? Because that's where I want to go. So how do I start connecting all these different things, especially if I want to become a pediatrician, or if I want to become a biomedical engineer? Ambitious, I'll say that. But these are the phenomenal things that young people already start to look at, and look at proactively. And this is something that we've seen as a growth of Brooklink over the last two years. All right. So that's my time. I'd like to bring Becca back. Thank you.
Thanks, Louise. So what's exciting ahead, aside from all the exciting stuff that we've already accomplished together with all of our partners and community, is that we're going to dig deeper and dive deeper in using these youth survey results to change the designs of programs and activities in our community to more engage youth, use these results to inform our policy strategies and our partnership development. And as Louise indicated, this coming fall, we're really going to look to our school partners to really deepen what we call as our referral partners, the relationships in our schools to really connect more young people to Brooklink. And finally, I didn't have a chance to talk much about this, but we are in the process of developing a new strategic plan for the Alliance. So we're going to be diving deep into a process of engaging young people, their parents and community, about how we can improve the lives of youth as we send them on that pathway to graduate from high school, college, career, and to reduce their experience of violence. So with that, I want to say thank you for your support of young people in our community, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Louise. We do appreciate you coming and sharing your information with us. I think it's great work, and we look forward to your data in September. Board members, do you have questions, comments? I know you do.
Chair Henke.
Director Edom.
I just have a comment. I've noticed that these youth programs are kind of popping up all over the country, and I really think it's great. I have a granddaughter who had an opportunity, actually, through a youth program in another state, to do an internship at University of Missouri in St. Louis. And she did a, she worked in the research department. It was a research department, but what she did was she did some experimenting with flies to determine if, when they laid their maggots, I guess.
Sounds awesome.
She didn't think she would like it, but then she really liked it because it gave her, you know, an experience that she might not have gotten otherwise. But what she was doing was actually studying flies to see if a fly lays maggots on a particular food, when that maggot grows up to be a fly, does he go, does it go back to that same food or not? And I'm actually waiting to get the results.
We're excited for that data, too.
But she's having a ball doing it, and, you know, she, again, didn't think she would like it, but they encouraged her to do it because it's just a great experience, and she really appreciated it. So, and it sounds like you're, this program is doing a lot, too, to help youth to kind of get a understanding of what it's like out in the real world so that, you know, when they get out there, it won't be, you know, a shock that, you know, you could end up in a research department, you know, studying flies.
Thank you. I just want to-
But thank you for all the work you do.
You're welcome. I wanted to note on one of the things you said, and I think an exciting next step, is that both North Hennepin and Hennepin Technical College are eager to double and triple the number of internships that they have. We're working on a partnership with them now to really coordinate internship experiences from high school to college. I think that this is, as many of you know, working on the world's best workforce is a real challenge in connecting these bigger systems. But in this out-of-school-time space through the summer internships, this is one area where we're beginning a collaboration to partner differently, so that young people do have that continuous experience from high school to college. I can't guarantee fly internships, research as such, but-
Chair Henke.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I was really shocked to learn about the number of students that hadn't visited a college. That was pretty shocking to hear that. So, it was great to hear that that's part of the program and part of what you're exposing these kids to, because I imagine there's a lot of untapped knowledge and wisdom in these kids, and they need that encouragement. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to share something that I learned years ago, and it was, in the role that I have in my life outside of school board, one of the departments that I have supported has been Human Resources. And so I was participating in a meeting one day, and they were talking about, much as we hear from the school board, you know, recruiting students into a particular career field. And so having two daughters that have gone through college, I just asked them, I said, "So when are you reaching out to the students?" And they said, "Well, in their senior year." And I said, "Well, you need to get back a couple, three years earlier, because by the time they're a senior, they've probably already picked a career path. They've already picked a college. And so if you're reaching them in 12th grade," I said, "You're two to three years too late." So that was just an interesting thing that I learned on the school board. And so I just wanted to share that. As other employers think about attracting students into a career, they need to know they got to get them way earlier than their senior year. And I'm going to put my blinker on and ask a different question. I'm very intrigued when I hear just people in general talk about being engaged. Did the students share what did that mean to them? Was it lack of information, you know, on the topic, on an area of interest? And how do you help them engage with whatever their interest may be?
Thank you for that question. In the out-of-school-time field, there's a tool that we use to evaluate youth programs. It's called the Youth Program Quality Assessment. If folks are familiar with this, it has four degrees: creating a safe environment, supportive environment, and interactive environment, and an engaging environment. Within that engaging environment, there's a couple of things that are happening in spaces where that's what engagement means. The first item is around shared decision-making, having input and voice, modeling and coaching and teaching other young people in the program, and then having true, authentic leadership and deciding what does this program look like, and how, what are the activities that we're doing. So when you see those three things happening, a program gets a grade five out of five in terms of engaging young people. So that's one of the ways that we understand youth engagement is around those metrics and that particular tool. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does.
And in a simpler way, they're having fun, and they won't leave you alone. If young people are engaged, they're not not focused. I mean, they're completely focused for hours and hours on end. So that's kind of anecdotally one way you know that they are.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members, other questions? We have none. Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
We very much appreciate it. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda. Board member, are there items that you'd like to remove for separate consideration? Hearing none, I would move to accept the consent agenda as printed. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gertz. Any discussion, comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries to accept the consent agenda as printed. Our next agenda item is action items, and we have several contract items, and Judy McDonald will be doing those. And Judy, will, do you want to do all of them, and then, any questions, or do one, and then I'll see if there's questions?
I'll give you an overview, and then for each item, you'll need to take separate action, and then you can ask questions at that time.
We'll do questions at that time. Okay.
So I'm ready to go?
Yep, we are ready to go.
All right. Thank you, Chair Henke, school board members, and Superintendent McGuire. On the agenda this evening, our recommendations for approval of two individual contracts, Mary Higdon and Don Belfi, as well as five employee group contracts, administrative educational support professionals, communications personnel, confidential support specialists, kid stop instructors, and registered nurses, licensed practical nurses. School board members have had the opportunity to review the proposed changes to the provisions contained in the terms and conditions, ask questions and dialogue about the new provisions, and to consider financial implications. Now, the final step is for school board members to give consideration for formal approval. The contracts you'll be considering this evening include approximately 268 employees serving in support positions both at the district level and the building level. These employees are responsible for providing services to students and staff in the areas of clerical support, professional support, student instruction, and student help. All of the contracts expired on June 30, 2016. The new agreements contain some language changes that reflect current district practices, as well as additional language that serves to align group insurance benefits with other employee groups. The provisions fall within the financial parameters set by the board for the 2016-2018 contract terms, and it is the superintendent's recommendation that you approve the employee contracts presented to you this evening.
Thank you, Judy. So with that, our first item is A. So do we have a motion for the terms and conditions of the AESPs?
Mr. Chair, so moved.
Director Gerhart, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or discussion? I will just add that this contract, and there'll be several that don't meet my criteria for approving contracts. Many of them are in the area of, if we were to do layoffs, it's seniority-based, not the most effective person. Some are in the area of retirement incentives, sick days, using sick days for religious holiday leave. So those are some general comments that I'll have for this contract and some others. Any other comments? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The motion passes on the approval of the terms and conditions of the, between the Independent School District 279 and the AESPs from July 1 of 2016 to June 30 of 2018. Our next agenda item is the terms and conditions between ISD 279 and communications. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Director Gerhart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gertz. Any comments or questions? Also, for me with this one, it does not meet my conditions for approving contracts, so I will not be supporting it. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The motion carries on the approval of the terms and conditions between the ISD 279 School Board and communications personnel. Our next agenda item is the agreement on the terms and conditions between ISD 279 School Board and confidential support specialist. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Director Gerhart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gertz. Any comments or questions? This one also does not meet my criteria for approving contracts, so I will be withholding my support. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The motion carries on the approval of the terms and conditions between ISD 279 School Board and confidential support specialist. Our next agenda item is the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between ISD 279 School Board and kid stop instructors. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Director Gerhart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gertz. Any comments or questions? This one also does not meet my criteria for approving contracts, so I'll be withholding my support. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The motion carries on the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between ISD 279 School Board and kid stop instructors. Our next agenda item is the agreement on terms and conditions of employment between ISD 279 School Board and registered nurses and licensed practical nurses. Do we have a- Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Director Gerhart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gertz. Any comments or questions? This one also does not meet my criteria for approving contracts, so I will be withholding my support. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, the motion carries on the agreement, the terms and conditions of employment between ISD two seventy-nine school board and registered nurses and licensed practical nurses. Our next agenda item is, and so I will move this agenda item, the individual employment contract between ISD two seventy-nine school board and Mary Higdon, Network Administrator, July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen through June thirtieth of two thousand seventeen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gerhart. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries on the individual employment contract between ISD two seventy-nine school board and Mary Higdon, Network Administrator. Our next agenda item, I will move the individual employment contract between ISD two seventy-nine school board and Don Belfeu, Network Administrator. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gerhart. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries on the individual employment contract between ISD two seventy-nine school board and Don Belfeu, Network Administrator. Our next agenda item is gifts to the district. I will move to graciously accept gifts to the district totaling five thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and two cents. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ooh. Seconded by Director Edom. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to accept gifts to the district. Our next agenda item is announcements. Director Gerhart.
A school board work session will be held on Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, at six p.m. in the forum room at the ESC. The topics will be procurement process, long-term facilities maintenance, project implementation plan, Minnesota School Board Association, and Association of Metropolitan School Districts, organizational membership overview. This meeting will be open to the public. A regular school board meeting will be held on Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand sixteen, at six p.m. in the boardroom at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public.